Without a shadow of a doubt, it's the crockery showing social media history. I want to welcome you to another episode of the war zone. I got my man Donovan Siddique in the building. I got the queen, Demetra Kate, and I am the five star general. Tonight I get to be the victim. I said, I want to run for the school board four years later, I'm going to run. And tonight, my friends get to tear me apart. But guess what? Oh, five star. I eat the meat off the bone. And I'm gonna eat the bone tonight because I can flat out go when it come to education. Let's get to it, man. Say, man, I want to welcome y'all to another episode of the war zone and tell you thank you, thank you, thank you for tuning in. And, um, as we normally say, without you guys, we would not have a show. So we want to definitely thank you for tuning in. Um, I'm gonna start it off by saying that one, hopefully you good people have a great Thanksgiving. It's, it's not a day that I really mess with. Um, my parents are gone and it's kind of emotional for me. So that doesn't mean I don't want you guys to have a good Thanksgiving. But the most pressing thing on my mind in the news is what has been for the last few days? That the COVID is ravishing. It is decimating the United States of America. And I think that somebody needs to step up and make some executive decisions. Because it's going to be a lot of people that end up losing their life. Because these people are playing top politics and not playing real life. So, you know, make sure that you got everything you need to battle any ailments that you get so that you don't, um, you don't fall victim to the COVID. Donovan, what's going on, my friend?
Oh, same old, same old. Uh, COVID is running rampant. I'm, I live in one of the, uh, most affected counties. And people are out there partying, just doing what they usually do. So I guess fat meat and greasy, but I don't want to wish this on anybody. But we're going to show them, show them, show them a little bit later. In the news, President Donald Trump basically has conceded the election. He says that he still is going to be suing and fighting it to the last minute. But it just seems now it's apparent that the reality has set in. And you guys got to realize this, the only reason he did it is because major corporation CEOs said that he is messing with their money. And they are not going to contribute to these, uh, Republican parties in, uh, Georgia about that election there. And did, you know, they just basically told him, get the fuck on. So that's basically it. Demetra?
So hello, everybody. I hope you're having a fabulous Tuesday. It's Tuesday, right? Yeah, fabulous Tuesday and everything like that. If I can ask you guys to do us a favor, share this video. I'm not really for sure what's going on with the views on Facebook. But they are down significantly, um, not just on this platform, but a whole lot of other platforms. And so I'm not sure if it's something internal or what. But if you good people can do us a favor and share it so more people can get the information and learn something new. Um, we would greatly appreciate it. So if everybody could share, 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 it'd be dope. So anyway, yeah, as they, um, you know, Donovan and Gary both said, um, as we know, Thanksgiving is coming up. It's going to be a super spreader event where lots of people are going to get together. And they've been told not to by the CDC, Dr. Fauci, and everybody in between says, hey, don't do it. You're going to spread the coronavirus even more. Um, and so I would just say, you know, stay home as much as you can and eat your own turkey with your own turkeys at home. Uh, so that you don't, uh, spread the virus. But, uh, as for me and mine, we're going to stay isolated away from everybody else who thinks it's okay to be out and about. Gary, what's going on?
The other night, about a week ago, we saw the Houston Independent School Board trustees make a decision not to make Dr. Granita Lathan the permanent superintendent. The teachers' union supported her, but only for a one-year contract. Which I thought was absurd because I've never seen a permanent superintendent get less than a five-year contract. And I felt that that was disrespectful to her as an African American and as a woman who's done a hell of a job with, with what she had to work with. Um, at that point, I said, I would never run for elected office again. I would never do it. Um, I ran for school board four years ago. Everything that has happened in the Houston Independent School District in those four years. I called it while I was on the campaign trail. I said that there was corruption in the procurement department. I said that the Texas Education Agency would come in and attack the school district. I even called Dr. Granita Lathan's firing, you know, um, what it was October 2018? I called that two months prior and named all five of the people that ended up trying to fire her that night she got fired. So how did I know two months in advance? Well, you know, at that point, when they did it again the other night, I had to sit down and I had to think. You have all this ability. I battled this school district over 200 times. And I've won 200 times representing teachers, parents, and children. I clearly can walk circles around their attorneys. That's the easy part. But I've also helped a lot of schools. Whether it be with, you know, ravaged by gang violence and go in and help the administration try to solve that Wisdom High School. Brought my program over there when, and when, when, uh, Principal Jonathan Trent was there. And Wisdom is like the United Nations of high schools. It has over 200 different nationalities of children that go to that school. And it was great to get an inbox from him one day saying, ever since you brought your program, gang violence has decreased significantly. So I had to think, should I do this? Should I do this? Should I give it another shot? Because I felt like I got shafted the first time and I didn't want to do it. But I also told myself after that election, if there was nobody worthy of running, then I would throw my name in the hat. And four years later, with all the work that I've done in District Nine to help those schools, there is nobody worthy. They've done no work. They don't have a connection with the schools, anything like that. So I decided I would run for the school board. And this, I guess you could call this the official announcement of it. And, um, tonight you guys get to grill me. You know, what makes me so qualified to be able to represent 240,000 kids? Because I think that's where we lose focus. We have a single member districts where you're only over a certain district. My district is District Nine. But when you're a school board trustee, you represent 240,000 kids on the average. So you're making decisions for all these children. So I'm going to kind of just kick back and let y'all just try to, you know, try to dig your horns into it. But I can guarantee you one thing, when we finish this interview, you're going to figure out that not only am I the most qualified candidate to have to run, I'm the most qualified person that's going to run or that is either sitting on the school board at this point.
All right, all right. Well, you know, the one thing I have to give you, you know, people that don't know, when it comes to running for public office, you are now open to everything. I'm talking about stuff that you might have done 30 years ago, could be thrown back in your face. And we got some feedback there. Um, so, you know, you, you, you're going to be subject to a lot of stuff. So I'm going to give you big ups to, uh, for doing that, putting yourself out there. You don't have any kids on, you know, in school, but yet you're, you're still concerned about the kids. So that's a big thing. Another thing I want to bring up real quick is the fact that I am very good at roasting people and getting the good questions out there and putting you on the hot seat. Which is why I have a show out here called The Hot Seat. Because I won't let you get away with anything. So it's nothing personal. So everybody out there watching today, um, this is our opportunity to ask the questions that you guys really need to know. And we're not going to hold no quarter on this, okay? We're, we're going to give it to them. But I'm sure the general is going to do very, 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 very well. And, you know, I'm not in Houston, but here's some of the questions that I do want to know. For last couple of months that we've been together, you know, you, you know, you keep talking about how messed up the Houston School District is. So, so just give us a little background, you know, why do you think it's so messed up?
It's a lot of different reasons. Um, one of the main reasons that the Houston Independent School District is not where it needs to be and is so messed up is because you have people that are sitting in the seats of trustees that don't really care about children. I get the fact that the school system is a business. But your most precious commodity are the children that you service. As well as the, the administration, as well as the teachers, the support staffs, the janitors. I mean, everybody plays an integral part in that. But the reason that the Houston Independent School District is messed up is you have people that one, were not genuine when they ran for school board trustee. They lied. Bottom line, they lied. You can have all the degrees in the world, but not have the basic knowledge to sit in the seat that you sit in. You can answer every question the right way, but then get in the seat and forget exactly what you said you were going to do. The mission statement of the Houston Independent School District is what we should live and die by. Our children come first. These kids are not being serviced. These schools are underfunded from, from a school district standpoint, but also from a state level standpoint. The state of Texas is not funding education properly in, in the state of Texas. They're just not doing it. So with that being said, you have to have people there that put the children first. Because if you don't, then all it is is a business and then the kids are left to the wayside. It is our responsibility to educate these children to the highest degree. But when you can say honestly that you live and you breathe a segregated school system to where they get an education on the black side of town that is not equal to the education that they get on the white side of town, we now have a problem. When you get comfortable saying that I don't understand how, you know, there's no equity in the schools. There's no equity because you didn't create it. You see what I'm saying? So it's basically it's screwed up because you have the wrong representation representing these children and, and all these people that work in this district. That's the bottom line.
So, yeah, I mean, we'll feedback. So you talked about the board of trustees a little bit. I want to dig a little bit deeper. Um, what is the racial makeup of that particular board of trustees?
We have three African-American trustees. We have one Asian. We have, uh, one white and the rest are Latino. It's nine of them. So that is the racial makeup of the board of trustees.
And you said, um, real feedback. I don't know why we're having that issue again. But so you're saying the schools are predominantly black with students?
The makeup of HISD as far as the students goes is predominantly Latino.
Got it. Okay, so what is your overall opinion? We're having a little feedback. I don't know why he's doing that. So what is your overall opinion of the board of trustees?
My overall opinion of the board of trustees is they lack a clear understanding of what these children actually need. The reason that I say that, when you have somebody that sits in a seat for four years, but yet you say you represent 240,000 children and you've never set foot in an African-American school, something's wrong with that. But yet you're making decisions in reference to those same children. The board of trustees not only has a racial divide, the board of trustees is surrounded by racism in itself. The reason I say that, I never, well, I get it because from an African-American standpoint, an African-American standpoint, we're racist against our own people sometimes. But I know for a fact, because I've heard the conversations where you have Mexican board members who don't want to be identified as Latino. They don't want to be identified as Latino. You look at the last four years of the way that they voted on certain issues. All we have was three people, three African-Americans. And I don't think that every issue is a black and a white issue. You see what I'm saying? But when you start looking at the way that they vote, you already know, if it's an issue that pertains to an African-American school, they are going to be outvoted 99% of the time. Normally it's five to three and one abstaining because the board president, who is a Caucasian, doesn't want to be caught on either side. So she'll just abstain from voting for certain things. So these other people, they will just vote along the racial lines instead of voting the way that it should go. You know, and, and we have to make better decisions for the kids. So if I had to rate them from one to 10 on the job that they've done the last four years, I would give them about a three.
Okay, so let me, um, earlier, uh, just a few minutes ago, you said that the board, they don't know what the children need, the students need. So in your opinion, what do the students need?
Well, we'll never find that out unless you talk to them. You know, we, we, we as adults, we as adults, we tend to want to make all the decisions for the kids in the school system. But if you have a school that's underperforming, where you have children that one are not coming to school for whatever that reason may be. You have a school that has a high turnover rate in teachers. The principal is being rolled out every two to three years. Before you make a decision on that school, why don't you go take a walk in that school? Why don't you go visit the school to see exactly what's going on? Now, as far as trying to figure out what the children need, I don't like the way they do surveys. The way that we did it at Yates as a community, we had a great administrator there, Dr. Kenneth Davis, who has moved on to higher things in, in HISD. But he would engage the community, the stakeholders, as well as, as the parents and the children to find out exactly what they wanted, to see if we could, you know, implement these things so that the kids would want to come and be proactive. And I think that needs to be done more. Because at the end of the day, if the kid don't like, if you go, we did it at Yates, it happened. They put in a, they put in something, a medical science program. They couldn't get any kids to sign up for this program. When they would go get their schedules at the beginning of the year, they might have four kids in this program and they needed at least two to three hundred. And they wouldn't do it. So you ended up with an entertainment academy because we surveyed our children to find out exactly what they wanted. So when you think of an entertainment academy, you think of rap music, R&B music. No, 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 no. They learn how to run their own companies. Entrepreneurship is what we teach, we teach every night on this program. So they learn how to run their own companies. But also, we created pathways for them to be able to do other things. So the first time I pulled the kids, I say, well, who want to be a rapper? You know, half the class raised their hand. I say, well, who wants to be a actress or an actor? Most of the kids raised their hand and that left one kid. And I say, well, young lady, what do you want to be? She says, I want to be an attorney. I started laughing and the class was like, why are you laughing? Because all of y'all would be her clients. And entertainment law was one of the pathways that we wanted for the program. You see what I'm saying? We wanted entertainment law for that program. And I just think that you have to communicate with the children. You cannot let them not be a part of trying to figure out what they actually need.
Okay, so let me, let's ask this last question, I give it back to Donovan. You said, um, you know, there's a lot of racism going on, um, within the school district and all of that. What is the number one thing you would do on day one? If you got, not if, but when you get that seat, what is the number one thing you could do to, uh, start getting rid of racism if, um, at all? Like what, what is the number one thing you would do to get rid of it?
First thing you have to do, you treat racism like you treat cancer. The first thing you have to do is you have to diagnose it. You have to admit that there's racism in here. Not once you diagnose it, you see what I'm saying? You expose it. So now, once we figured out that there's racism in here, who in here is actually racist? Nobody's going to raise their hand, okay? So now that you've exposed it, now you got to treat it. So the way you treat it, yes, ma'am.
I guess, because we know that there's racism because you told us it's been exposed because we're talking about it here. So what are some racist things that are going on that you feel like on day one need to go? Like what, what's racist in your opinion at, um, in the school district?
Well, first of all, the perception that you have to have a Latino superintendent because your population is Latino. Well, here's my problem. The last permanent superintendent that we had was named Richard Caranza from San Francisco, California. He was Latino. He walked in the door, he walked in the front door, and one night he ran out the back door. So my thing is, let's get past this myth that the only way this school district is going to do what it needs to do and become better at what we're doing is if we have a Latino superintendent. So from day one, it's got to be understood that I'm only voting for the most highly qualified person in the country that applies for that job. And I honestly feel that the most qualified person is the person that sits in the seat as an interim right now. It has nothing to do with her being black. It has something to do with the fact that she has helped get rid of all of these failing schools that these prime superintendents helped create. She, she's attacking the, the violence on the campuses. You know, our kids are being respected by the police officers on the campuses. Every now and then you have something that goes on, but not to the level that it was doing before. Another thing, oh, she's mean and she's this. Now, let's clear up something. She's in charge. So if you didn't show up in the classroom to do your job, then guess what? You won't keep your job very long under this lady. She demands excellence and for me to get rid of the racism is having a, to, I'm big on having conversations. It's no ducking this no more. It's no ducking it. It's the way that they voted, the way that they've treated her for the last two years and eight months that shows the racism to the highest degree. It's the fact that you had a school cashmere that had a failing rating for like nine years. When the, when that good principal over there and those teachers pull that off with, with those kids and then they pass that test, that was a celebration we were all waiting on from all over the city. But where were these people? They were invited. They never showed up to celebrate the African-American kids who's, all of a sudden, they could get it done. The same thing happened at Worthen High School. You know what I'm saying? So, you know, it's just things that they do that are strange African, you know, not African, but Black History Month. Why would you have a mariachi band in the hallway? Because we highlight our bands. Why would you have a mariachi band playing in the hallway during Black History Month? It's, it's so many things. I, I, I look at the racism from them with the way they voted in the last four years because I've seen every vote and I know that it was not in the best interest of, of children.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. I like that. Uh, Janelle says, "Real life, lean on me." So she says that. I got two questions for you on this one and I'm going to get to some of the questions in, in the comments. So I'm going to throw you for a curb. Um, Ron Trail says, "How will you help stop gang activity?"
It's simple. And when I say it's simple, some people sitting on the edge of their seat, what do you mean? Well, what have you, what have you been doing for the last four, five, six, seven, eight years, Mr. Monroe? I meant the gang members. I meant the gang members. I make these children believe that they have a high calling. I make these children believe that you ain't giving up on hope because I'm not going to let you. I'm not going to let you. So what we have to do, we got to start caring about the kid more. Yeah, he's a student. But when you see that kid lagging, then you got to do something. You got to talk to him. And that's normally just a conversation. They actually want to sit down and talk to you, Donovan. They want to sit down and talk to you, Demetra. They don't know how to approach you. But see, they ain't got a problem approaching oh-five star because he in the sweats and he got his Air Maxes on or his Jays on. And, "Mr. Monroe, let me holler at you." Let's sit down and talk. Let's talk about your grades. It's, it's no way, son, that you can learn all those plays on the football field, but you can't pass algebra. What type of help you need? I'm willing to help you. You see what I'm saying? When I go to the entertainment academy, and this happened for real, and I listened to a song that the teacher wanted me to listen to. And I say, "Man, who is that?" He say, "Man, that's that young man right over there. He's a 103 gang member." "Son, come in here. Let me holler at you." He say, "Yes, sir." I say, "Are you serious about pursuing a music career?" And he say, "Yes, I am." I picked up my phone, I called my friend at Sony Records in front of this kid and put him on the speaker. "I'm finna send you something." That child walked away from that game because now he has a little hope. But what I need you to do is not just be a singer. I need you to learn how to read because I need you to be able to read your contracts. I need you to learn math so you can figure out your money. So it's just having a conversation with these gang members and not walking in there with your suit and tie on acting like you above them. No, you have to be them.
Second part of, of the question. Now, you know, running for office, it takes a lot of resources. It takes a lot of footwork. We're in a pandemic right now. So I know you got to get your team together to see how you guys are going to do this via social media. I don't know how you guys are going to do your thing. But again, you don't have any kids in the school system. And I know you care about the kids and all that other stuff. So why put yourself through all of this stuff? I mean, why are you running for school board?
We switched the blueprint up. I had a school counselor named Velma Johnson. And I ended up having a puppy about eight years ago that I named Velma. Every dog in my house had a name from somebody at Yates. One of my dogs was named Booker after my coach. The other one was named Velma. Well, Ms. Johnson, she's no longer here. She passed away. She was murdered. But I flunked senior English. And when I flunked senior English, I went to office because back then she had to sign off on anything you decided to do. I said, "Ms. Johnson, what we going to do?" She say, "Uh, well, you got three options. She say, "You can go to night school in the summertime." Man, I'm not finna mess up my summer. She say, "Well, you can come back and take the class over if it's offered in the first semester." I say, "Ms. Johnson, just stop right there. I don't want to hear the third option." She say, "Well, what you think is the third option?" I say, "I could get a GED." She say, "I'm not signing off on a GED. Your momma didn't put you through school for 12 years to get a GED because you were lazy and didn't want to go to class? You see what I'm saying? So when I think about why do I want to do it? Because we got to bring that back, man. We got to bring that back, man. We got to start caring about these kids, man. We got to start caring about them in every facet of the game. These kids will give you everything you want in a classroom if they believe that you believe in them. But when they figure out you playing with them, when they stop trusting you, they not going to do anything. So I try to keep my word to these kids. And I just believe that somebody created a system in the United States of America where all African-American high schools or kids, all of a sudden had this, this tube that they, they just went down. How did all the black kids in America get dumb at the same time? No, 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 no. Our kids are not dumb. When you give them what they need to work with, they will excel. And I tell them the stories, "Well, Mr. Monroe, what kind of student were you? I was, I was good. You know, I was decent, you know? But I could have done better, just like you could do better." And sometimes I got to put my money where my mouth is. Look here, son. One kid, he was on a track to be dead with what he was doing. Tell you what we going to do. Look here, man, I need you to make it across that stage. with what he was doing. Tell you what we gonna do. Look here, man, I need you to make it across that stage. If you can make it across that stage, when you come out the arena that day, I got $500 for you. The kid walked away from the streets and walked across that stage, and I'm standing out there. He say, "Man, I need my money." "Here your money, homeboy. I'm gonna keep my word, man." So all you, all you gotta do to understand me is I have a passion for it. I want our kids to have a shot. So if they blow their shot, that's on them. But we are obligated to give them a shot.
All right, so let, we're gonna dig a little bit deeper here, just a little bit deeper. I wanna go back to something uh, that you said a minute ago. Uh, you're saying basically that the, uh, school board is predominantly made up of Hispanics in the school. Uh, uh, the students, I guess, are predominantly Hispanic, correct? And so, um, you kinda tied that to, um, your reason why you think there's some racism, um, going on. But to me, I don't necessarily see racism in that example. I'm not saying that racism doesn't exist there. But what I see more or less is our representation. To me, it's a numbers game. If you are, um, the majority in a situation, whatever the governing thing is, whether city council, the, the, uh, school board or whatever, it's supposed to, um, look like the, um, the majority of the, the constituents, the students, or whatever it is. A prime example is that of, uh, Ferguson, um, Missouri, where Mike Brown was murdered. The, I think the town is like 90% African-Americans, but the city council at one point in time was all white. And so somehow, the people, the constituents got that backwards. And so, um, what would you do to, okay, no, that's, that's actually not the question that I want to ask. I just want to, you know, just draw, point that point out. To me, I don't hear repi, uh, racism. I hear representation. Okay. So what would you specifically do to, um, improve life for your African-American students there, since, you know, they're not in the majority? Because Carter G. Woodson said that it is not the goal of, um, white supremacy or the school system. And he said this in the early 1900s, it's not their goal to, uh, develop students. They just kinda wanna transform them into whatever idea they have of them. That kinda goes back to your question, where you were saying that, um, our, our children aren't stupid, but it's just the system that's been, um, exacted upon them. So what would you specifically do when you get on that school board to improve life specifically for African-American students?
Well, first of all, we can ask a thousand questions, but we have to understand exactly what a school board trustee's job is. So I can answer any question, but at the same time, it may be outside the scope of my job. And if it's outside the scope of my job, I can't even accomplish the goal, so I can sound good. You know, the best thing to do is have a decent relationship with the administration. Create allies on the board, which is, it's not as hard as people think. You know, a lot of people think that I'm crazy, that I'm out of control. No, I'm not. Y'all get to hang out with me backstage every night. Fun-loving, I'm cool. But just on some things, I'm just not gonna play the game. So, create, cre, create some continuity in the school district. We need some stability. You see what I'm saying? This whole thing is unstable. It's, it's, it's too much chaos. It's too much chaos. And with that being said, my job is basically, as a trustee, is to hire, fire a superintendent, you know, vote on policy, set tax rates, you know, de- decide how much taxes we gonna pay. You feel what I'm saying? So you just gotta kinda work around that and not overstep your boundaries to where you, you end the administration's business. You see what I'm saying? But I think if you communicate with the administration, you can, you can create some avenues to be able to make life better. But I think the best thing is the community school model. You know, we, we gotta do a better job at having the community more involved, bringing in businesses to help us with these children. You see what I'm saying? To help us with these children. You, do, do you know how many homeless kids that we have in, in every school district? You know how many kids come to school hungry every single day? A hungry kid can't learn. That's why we gotta do something about that. We gotta do something about the gang violence, because a scared child cannot learn. You see what I'm saying? So those are conversations that you have to have, and there are things that are being done right now that I'm very satisfied with. You've not heard me really bash the Houston Independent School District in the last few months. Well, for a long time, because most of the things that I would wanna do, they've already started implementing. And one of the biggest things is get rid of in-school suspension. Stop treating a child like they in jail, because they made a mistake in school, where you lock them in this classroom and they in there all day. Why don't we turn in-school suspension into in-school mentoring? Why don't we have conversations with our children? You'll see them respond.
One last question. You talked about the mariachi band on Black History Month. Um, I, yeah, I think that's an issue. I think that's an issue. But I think it's an issue because it's, uh, it's almost like, what y'all gonna do about it? What y'all Negroes gonna do about it if we have a mariachi band come up in there on, uh, Black History Month? And so my question to you is, I know you're running for a trustee, and then, uh, maybe you can explain to us exactly what a trustee's, uh, responsibilities are. But what would you do if this is in your scope, your, your, your job description? What would you do to wake up the parents to where they're more involved, to where a mariachi, nothing wrong with a mariachi band, but on Black History Month, I think that's very, very tone-deaf and a more like, I don't give a damnish. So what would you do to wake the parents up?
To wake my parents up is simply something I wanted to do when I ran the first time. What we have to do is every single month, you have a school board meeting, but you have an agenda review where you go over everything. Everything that I can discuss that's not in closed session, because in closed session, it stays in closed session. But the agenda in itself, I have a spot right now, I secured it today, where every month before we go into the board meeting, we're going to have a community meeting. I'm gonna go over every single agenda item. And guess what you're gonna do, madam parent and mister parent? You're gonna tell me exactly how I need to vote. And all I'm gonna do is walk into the building and carry your votes in there. So if you have something, and I'm gonna just throw something out there, we want African-American studies in HISD, which we should've been had. We should've, we should've had it a long time ago. And I have this meeting, and these parents say overwhelmingly, "You need to go in there and vote yes for that item." Then guess what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna go in there and vote yes. Now, as a parent, you see that your voice actually matters, because I'm your employee. The superintendent would be my employee, and all employees in the district are her employees. But I want my people to have a clear-cut path to the decision-making process. And I promise you, that's the biggest reason that a lot of people do not vote, because they feel they're not being heard. So every month, you get to tell trustee Monroe how he needs to vote on every single item.
Ooh, ooh. Um, real, real quick, this is from, uh, Corliss Johnson. "Are you willing to donate your salary to invest in the kids?"
There is, there is no salary as a trustee. But I will answer her question, because I don't get a salary. I need to figure out how much I've invested just as a parent, just as a community member. I had a room full of retesters at Worthen High School that's in District Nine, where I'm at. These kids struggling to pass that state-mandated test. I put my money where my mouth was. I walked in there. Whoever passes this test with the highest score, I'm gonna give you this amount of money. Nobody flunked the test. So I've been leading with my money and making sure that these kids had incentives to do great. And honestly, I tell them some days, "Well, Mr. Monroe, I made the honor roll. I'm not impressed." "Why? Why? You're supposed to do that." "Can you graduate in the top 10%? Come on, if you do that, man, I do whatever you want me to do then." So, the thing is, is I've been invested in our kids, not just black kids, white kids, Asian kids. I invest in all of them.
Well, you know, uh, you know, Demetra always does her homework on this show, and she did, she dug a little deep, because, you know, her being new to Houston, she had to check you out, Monroe. She, she had to do it. She'll put you, you know, she'll put you on the spot. And I'm sure a lot of people who are, you know, in the area also are familiar, not everybody, but some people are familiar. The question that has to go out there is this. Why were you banned from the school system, and how did you get back?
The reason I was banned is, you know, in all actuality, it wasn't the trustees that banned me. That, that was a mandate from the Texas Education Agency Conservator. Miss, uh, I forgot her name. But the reason why is at Fonville Middle School, there was a substitute teacher that had a gun in her purse, and I found out about it. And I went to these people, trying to talk to them. I thought I had a decent relationship. Let's talk about it. And they were trying to sweep it under the rug. So I happened to be out of town, and I was scheduled for a grievance hearing with, with a set of teachers on, um, on a, on a Wednesday. They called me on the Sunday and told me I needed to be there that Monday. So that mean I had to get up, spur the moment, drive to have this hearing, where they were trying to backdoor some teachers. Not it, not, not an issue getting compound, because I got a gun on the campus, and then I got you illegally removing two teachers from a campus, and the administration of the school district didn't even know that the teachers had been removed. They were just paying them, and they were at home. So I go into this meeting, and I'm not the type to play when I represent somebody. I went hard in the paint that day. Well, it wasn't an issue that day. Two days later, I gotta go back, out of town, come back for the school board meeting. So they still have not addressed the issue about the gun. So when I go into the school board meeting, I'm on fire, because what I see is one of these kids dying on the campus. Well, hold on. Months later, and then I'll tell you that. Months later, a kid actually did die on the campus. He got shot. God was telling me to tell you this was gonna happen. So I go into the school board meeting, and I'm on fire, and I'm talking, and I'm pointing, you know. All of a sudden, me pointing while I'm talking was a gun gesture. They took it as a threat. The whole time you said I was threatening you, there were 15 officers in the room, including the chief of police of the Houston Independent School District. Never once was I asked to leave the room. Never once was I asked to leave the podium. I got to speak my whole speech. I had a shirt on with the principal of Fonville's picture on there, and said that she was racist, and she didn't like black teachers, because she had gotten rid of 25 black teachers in less than a school year. 25. So all of a sudden, the next day, I get a letter telling me I'm banned. Well, all I wanted was due process. I responded to the letter. I got no response. So at that point, I hired an attorney, a very good attorney. And he asked me, he said, "What do you wanna do?" "I wanna sue them, because they're in violation of my First Amendment right." They're in violation, because they wanted me, "You can't say this, and you can't say that, and you can't say it at this volume." And I say, "That's, that's not how that works." He say, "Where do you wanna file it? State or federal court?" I say, "I wanna go to federal court, because they are going to stand behind the Constitution." Now, when we went to federal court, they came in with a bunch of lies. "Oh, we were afraid," and he was pointing his finger, you know, and I even showed him a picture of Barack Obama pointing his finger the same way when he talked. So the judge at the local level of federal said, "Well, I tell you what." Because they were trying to ban me for life. But the day before we go to court, they said, "Well, look, if he does this, if he agrees not to wear these types of shirts, if he won't mention HISD employees..." Man, I looked at my attorney. "Man, we not agreeing to that?" He said, "I already know we not agreeing to that, because you have the right to say whatever you want." So the local judge, you know, they came in and they tried to make, paint me as a villain, and they were lying. So the local judge said, "You know what? I tell you what. We're gonna sit him out six months, and then we'll let him come back." My attorney was not satisfied with that. It didn't matter to me, because, like you said, I didn't have a kid in the school district, so it didn't matter to me. My attorney said, "No, we're gonna take it to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals." Now, if you understand the judicial process, that's one step away from the Supreme Court. We went to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, and when we got to the Fifth Circuit, it got real. The oral arguments are still on the website of the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, if you wanna go listen. The first thing they asked him, "You said he threatened someone. Define the threat." They couldn't define the threat. One justice told him, "Do you understand that a school board meeting is a limited public forum? And as long as he does not threaten anybody, and you've not defined the threat, he can say what he wants as loud as he wants. There's nothing that you can do about it." And as far as what he wears on his shirt, the Constitution says that he can do it. Tell y'all what, this is basically what it was in a nutshell. We gonna send this back down to Houston. Y'all figure it out, because if it comes back up here, you already know what it's gonna be. So basically, we won. We go back down to Houston. At that time, it's December, because you know, it takes time. And the judge say, "Well, Mr. Monroe, I'm gonna sit y'all." Just sit, I said, "I can't go to the meeting anyway." So, you know, the meeting is over. So I had to sit out that, that, that month, and I was free to go back in. And the first night I came back in, and I want everyone of y'all to know, I came with that same fire. The fire that got me put out, I came back with the same fire. But now I'm armed with the Constitution to back me up. So I wanna thank my attorney, Scott Newall, because at this point, they don't even wanna pay the man legal fees. They so dirty. And knowing they lost. But that's how I got back in.
So I wanna, um, kinda direct this, uh, next part of it, uh, to the issue of change. Um, so you said that you were banned, kicked out, or whatever it was, from these meetings due to your hand gestures, and, you know, basically, it sounds like it's kinda made up to me, right? It's like a, an excuse to have you out of there. Um, will you change your approach, your disposition, and even the way you dress, um, when you're elected to the, uh, to the Board of Trustees?
That the way you dress can define your actual ability to do the job. And the reason I say that, and then I'll answer the other part of your question, is because how many people are set up there with three-piece suits on and were crooked as all our dogs? How many people have set up there looking like a fashion model and didn't even know what the hell they were voting on? So how will I dress? Probably polo shirts. I'm not wearing no tie. Polo shirts, some slacks. Some nights I might have on a full warm-up, and on it'll say District Nine Trustee. The one thing I'm not gonna do is change who I am. I'm a very passionate person. I'm very educated in the educational system. So no, I'm, I'm not gonna go to the extreme and, and try to be the next Steve Harvey. That's not gonna work. I'm gonna be Gary Monroe. Now, as far as changing my approach, I'm in the process of writing three different plans, proposals for school districts in other states right now. So that means I've sat, and I've talked to, to, to superintendents. I've talked to, uh, trustees. I know how to handle myself in the business setting. So the thing is, is if you think that you're gonna have me in a back room in a closed-door session, and I'm gonna be blowing, no, I'm blue to smoke. I'm already in the building. I ain't gotta do that. I ain't gotta do that. What I have to do is show you the other side of me. The other side, which is the educated, black man's side, that clearly understands what our children need. And when I say "our" children, that's African-American children, and that's 240,000 kids total.
So, um, Dexter, he, uh, had a question earlier on, and I'm paraphrasing at this point, but he says, basically, um, "Don't do it. We need you as a freedom fighter." So I kinda like ran into the question a little bit. Maybe he's thinking that if you go, um, to the, to Board of Trustees, you may, you know, get polished up a little bit, and you might lose a little bit of the fight that, you know, people know and love you for. Um, so what do you say about that? Um, will, will you be able to, uh, remain the freedom fighter that Dexter and everyone else perceives you to be, if you get that, uh, position?
One of the best songs I ever wrote was called "The Same OG." And the reason I wrote it is because somebody told me one day, "Man, you different. You changed." And I thought about that, and it's the best song that I ever... And I thought about that. And it's the best song that I ever wrote. And I, in the song, it basically tells you, I'm the same dude I was twenty years ago. So the difference is, I get to fight from the inside Dexter. And that's a little bit different than fighting from the outside all the time. Because when I stand at the podium, according to state law. The Board of Trustees do not have to answer me. But if I'm sitting in that room as a trustee, they have to answer me. They have to dialogue with me. You can no longer get around that. But can can I handle them? Sure, I can. I've had private meetings with the board president, Sue Daco. I've had a private meeting with with Judith Cruz who sits on the school board. I've had several discussions, even fought in the community with Kathy Buford Daniels. So so the thing is, is will I have the same passion without a shadow of a doubt, brother? I plan on walking my schools, every single school in my district, every single month. To see what's going on. Now, I can't address it on the school level, but if I see something that's not right. I'm gonna go back to the administration. This is what I saw. This is what you need to look into. Now, you notice I didn't say you need to fix this. This is something you need to look into. So no, I'm not gonna change who I am. I'm gonna be the same OG.
Will you still uh, travel the country um, to different causes that like you've been doing? Will you still be able to do that?
Not a, not a shadow of a doubt. I can do that because according to state law, you should only have four meetings a month. Right now, the Houston Independent School District is having maybe three times that many meetings a month. I'm only obligated to be at four and that's all I'm gonna be at. So, so I'm gonna travel and I'm gonna help kids regardless.
A a quick question, you know, um, politics is very, very deep. A lot of people launch their political careers. You know, starting on the school board, they might be on the the traffic commission and then they kind of work their way up. Now, one of the problems that we have in local politics and national politics is the fact that. People stay there too damn long. So what would be your plan, being that, you know, this isn't a salary job? You know, you're you're four times, you know, out of the month and all that other stuff. What is your plan outside of, how long do you plan to be there, basically? How, you know, how 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 long do you plan to be there?
Your term is for four years. My plan, if the people would want me if I get in, is to run two terms. When I start my first term, I'm gonna find somebody that I can groom. Look here, you gonna walk this walk with me for four years. If we get the next four, you gonna walk them four. You gonna learn this game. You see what I'm saying? And after that, people will say, well, what you gonna run for next? Nothing. I'm an expert in education. That's why I'm one of the top education advocates in the state of Texas. I don't have a desire to be anything else. I don't want to be city council. I don't want to be the mayor. I just want to help the kids. And I think after a couple of terms, we should have a shift right it. And now it's time to turn this over to a youngster, man. And really, I'm gonna look for somebody that's fresh out of high school. Somebody with some fresh ideas because my old eyes can't see this no more. So it's time to just start grooming as soon as you get in.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, you know, because that's the thing, uh, you know, you know, we're not no spring chickens. And you got some politicians that stay in there until you have to carry them out when when uh, Monroe is gone and when Jerry's gone. You know, and 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 let's, I know you're gonna do very well in the position, but once you leave and you fix everything. Then you're gone and you didn't have anybody to groom you or to succeed you. God forbid something happens to you. Then the neighborhood reverts to how it was and then we're back to square one. And 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 that's one of the uh, big issues I've always had.
Ultimate Plan B. Now, of course, we know I want to go to law school and all that. Well, most likely, if I go to law school, I'll get my masters. And I always, as a poor child, I would dream big. So I don't want to be the mayor. I don't want to be the city council person. But if the high power allows me to keep breathing. With the way I'm going to school, when it's all said and done, I'll be the superintendent of the Houston Independent School District.
Um, so this, uh, I know we're wrapping it up here, but. Um, do you feel that the school, uh, the the Board of Trustees and the teachers' unions? Um, I have too much influence, not enough influence? What's your take on that? Because I hear. You know, when you say you want to groom um, a high school student, which I think is a very like dope idea. I think that's great because like you said, they're not too far removed from. You know, the uh, scholastic experience, but. Do you think that uh, the Board of Trustees and the uh, teachers' union have too much um, influence and do you think they will be able to? Influence the new person in a positive or negative way?
It's not a secret that the teachers' union wants to monopolize the school board. You gotta think about it. If you understand the economics of what they do and how they operate. You know, they can definitely influence some of these people. You know, it's it's been known, you know, you just getting here, so you'll learn as you go. It's been known that if you vote a certain way, then we'll support you financially. When you decide to run for reelection or whatever position you're gonna run for. I was one of two people that ran that refused to take money from any vendor. I didn't want money from vendors. I didn't want money from the, from from the uh, from the uh, from the union. Because I'm not gonna be beholden to you. You're not gonna control me and I vote a certain way. No, not gonna happen. I'm not gonna do that. So do I think they have a lot of influence over these trustees? Yes. Yes. And it's obvious because they'll endorse them. And if they don't do what they want to do, then the next time they run, they won't endorse them. They won't endorse them. But I'm not expecting an endorsement from the Chronicle. The the city, the the paper, Jacob Carpenter and his people over there, they don't like me. I'm a rebel rouser to them. But don't have a clue, you know, the impact that I've had on this school system. I don't plan on uh, screening with 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 the teachers' union. And I represent teachers. But that executive board over there ain't right. So, you know, and I will say this here, and if I'm lying, it is what it is. Don't make me go find that old phone. When I did screen with them four years ago. It's a text in my phone that said, Mr. Monroe, you had the best screening in the history. Of the AFL-CIO. Because I don't just talk about the issues, I touch them. So when we speak of special ed, I touch that issue. When we speak of the bond, I touch that issue. The corruption, I expose that issue. You see what I'm saying? So, no, you can't have influence over me because you run a teachers' union or you a vendor. Man, keep your money. I don't need it. I'd rather get money from my people.
Let me say, uh, Saul. You say, well, if you're going for any position, you will have to change, my brother. I love you. And I go something like that. Uh, let me just say this. Like, I believe, you know, people should change to some degree, but come on now. Everybody and their mama have watched Gary for years now. They've watched Gary. And I think it would be like super obvious if one day he got on here and said, well, you know, um. You like this beet juice here? Everything's great. If he, that's just gonna scream phony. I personally believe, and I'm in public relations, um, I personally believe he should be himself. I think that's why people. And I think, but I know that's why people go to Gary because they know that he is. Unpolished, but not in a bad way. He's not this stiff. You know, that's going to give you these, you know, super packaged, polished answers. He's gonna keep it real and we need somebody in every position who is going to be able to keep it real. Answer the questions so that they are understandable to everybody. Because a lot of times you get people in these. Trustee positions and this, that and the other, and they like to talk over everybody's head. Simply for the fact of being the smartest individual in the room, right? And so I don't personally think that Gary needs to change. There's some things he can do differently. Yeah, maybe, but completely do a three sixty. That's gonna scream phony all day long.
Exactly, exactly.
I study politicians. And I study Eric Mays, city council member from Detroit, Michigan. He does not hold his tongue. He says what's on his heart. And some days he'll use a cuss word. He'll say what needs to be said. But he fights for his people. And that's why he keeps getting reelected. See, we gotta get past the demeanor. We got to get past the, what you think is the anger. When you go admit that I'm the smartest person in that room? When you go admit that just as a parent and as a taxpayer, I've done more for children than. And I can't say anything about the new trustees because they just got there, Kathy Buford Daniels and 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 a few others. But the ones that have been there, I've done more for children as an outside entity. Than you did from the inside. So I know how to get up under your skin without using one cuss word. I'm very intelligent. And I can play mind games better than a lot of people. But I'm gonna tell you that the element that that people need to understand. That when certain people walk in the room, the games go out the door anyway. They already know who they can play with and who they can't play with. So guess what? It'd be my job to have that private conversation with my constituent. Elizabeth Santos. Let's sit down and talk. Let's see if we can get on the same page. Let's see if we can right the wrongs of what's been going on. See, them nine board members need to understand one thing. You need to be just like the Temptations. We ain't got to like each other. We just got to sing together four times a month. And make the best decisions for everybody that's in the Houston Independent School District. So I'm gonna be me. Last time I switched up. And I felt it hurting me. No, I'm gonna just be me. And that's what it is. I'm not with the BS. So the first night, I'm telling y'all, I'm gonna have on my old yay shirt. With my hat turned backwards because I made a promise to a guy that passed away, Rick Williams. Never met him, just used to talk to him on the phone. He said, you wear that yay shirt? And he passed away and 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 I honor, and I'm gonna honor that. But what difference does it make if I have a suit on or old yay shirt? When I turn that hat backwards, let's get down to business, man. I ain't come here to make friends. I came here to make change.
Exactly. Yeah, I I just wanted to add, you know, um. Uh, Jerry, the Five Star, you know, he already had a long following. He's got a lot of people that come and watch his shows. There's a reason why people come and watch his shows. And you know, it's funny because a lot of people will say, well, you need to do this. You know, because you're a little too loud or Donovan, you curse too much in my shit. I get all this stuff. But what you don't realize is. What got him here is what got him here. It wasn't, well, I'm gonna be straight and honest and stuff like, no, he has to be himself. Because that's what people want, want to come and see. At the end of the day, though. All of it, I'm talking to you guys there in Houston that want change and want something different. You want to put the Five Star in there because you know he has a a advocate's heart. You gotta put your uh, money where your mouth is. I don't mean, you know, money financially. I'm talking about actually support this man. Because when I ran out here, I went to my people. Now, I'm not from the hood, but I went to the hood. Fixed all kinds of stuff out down there for my people, brought the uh, Dimitri, you remember, we brought the um. Debate to the hood. We actually put the debate in the hood. Ask me how many of my people in the hood showed up. I mean, the people could literally walk across the street. To understand what's going on with City Hall and what what these candidates are about.
Let's get the racism out the room. Because right now, this is a nonpartisan election. But I have the support of Democrats. I have the support of Republicans. I have the support of black, white, Latino, Asian, for one reason. They know that when I show up, I'm gonna do the work. I'm gonna do the work. I'm not just coming here to take no pitches. I'm gonna do the work and I promise that we don't do it enough. But we need to honor our students. Every month, they do recognitions. Well, let's honor our students. Let's honor our custodians, our bus drivers. Because without these people, this school system could not run. It could not run. We want to definitely talk about a real pay raise for our teachers. I believe that a first-year teacher in the state of Texas in one of the largest school districts in the country. Should start off at sixty-five thousand dollars a year. If you want the best, you got to pay them like they the best. You got to pay them like they the best. I believe that we have a great athletic program in H I S D. But I believe we have forgotten that we're not just a basketball district anymore. Every school district around us has a state-of-the-art athletic football stadium. It is time for the children of H I S D to have the same thing so they can stop running to the suburbs so they can play on AstroTurf. So they can play under the lights like they really want to. It's time to start treating them like they are the most precious commodity that we have. And from an academic standpoint, we have to do something about getting our children to be able to read on grade level. By the, by grade. Our children are falling through the cracks. And bottom line, if we can't do that, we are failing. As trustees, we are failing as adults. These kids don't fail. We fail them.
Um, I'm gonna say this, and I know we're about to get out of here and and Gary, good job on um, you know, uh, letting everybody know. Uh, your qualifications and why you are running, why you are running for this position. Um, so you guys stay tuned. I mean, if you have the ability uh, to do so, vote uh, for Gary. Um, if you're really interested in change, but. You know, when I was listening to you speak and thinking about Saul's question in regards of you or, you know, statement in regards of you uh, changing. Adam Clayton Powell Jr. came to mind. If you guys don't know who he is, I have this, you know, posthumanist Lee, um. Posthumanist um, crush on Adam Clayton Powell Jr. He was a congressman, the first African-American congressman. In Harlem in the in the thirties, I think it was, thirties, forties, whatever it was. And he showed absolutely no fear for doing for his people. He was unapologetically black. He even was, um, had a saying. He went around Harlem. He's a congressman, now a sitting congressman. He says, I am the baddest nigga in Harlem. And he said that to say, I'm not scared of these white folks. I'm not scared of nobody. I'm gonna do what needs to be done. I'm gonna be myself. I'm gonna do everything that I was doing before I got on here. Now, he was a preacher's kid and he had some issues. You know, but he says, this is me. Don't focus on what I'm doing. You know, personally, focus on the job that I'm doing for the constituents. And they elected him time after time after time after time. You know, until later on, there was some other stuff that went on, but you know, he owned the seat. But it's because he delivered for his people. Reg, I mean, he was just suave, like he was so arrogant. It's like you couldn't tell him nothing. He was fine, but he. He did what he needed to do for his people and so. He's like, I'm not gonna change. Focus on what I'm doing. I'm delivering the results for my people. That's what you be, should be concerned with. Don't be concerned with what I'm wearing, what I'm smoking, what woman you may see me out with at the Cotton Club. Because he was with a lot of women. Don't worry about that. Worry about what I'm doing. And 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 am I doing the job right? Look him up, Adam Clayton Powell Jr.
I tell you what. When I walk into the building. Every single time as a parent and as a taxpayer, the Hattie Mae White Building. I know because I've done the history. Who Hattie Mae White was. The first African-American school board member in the Houston Independent School District. I don't think Hattie Mae White would tell me to change who I am if I'm gonna fight for what's right for children. I don't think my old superintendent who I've spoken to, Billy Reagan, would tell me to change. I know that my good friend, former governor Mark White, told me, don't you change a damn thing about how you do it, Mr. Monroe. So no, the fight is there. A quality education for all children is there. And for those that seem to put their children in their communities first. This African-American will say that black children matter and they will be first on my agenda. To make sure that their schools do not close, to make sure that they are properly funded. To make sure that they have the vocational programs that they need in their schools. I will fight tooth and nail. To make sure that those kids have what they need. So when I think about Hattie Mae White and what she had to go through. And now I get to walk into a building named after her, I'm going to leave it on the floor, bro.
Let me answer Saul. He says, so Dimitri, you're saying no change, uh, not a good approach. One thing I know for sure. Is that if Gary changes, it's only going to be to appease people who ain't going to vote for him anyway. The people who like Gary and will vote for him, they're not going to ask him to change. For Gary to change is going to appease the people who Gary will never be good enough for. And what he's going to end up doing is repu, uh, is jeopardizing his reputation to the people who would have voted for him if he'd have walked in the ass neck. He, then he's going to ruin his reputation with them is because what they're going to say is, well, you changed. You changed for them. But what about staying the same for people who had your back regardless? And so what you're asking Gary to do is try to tap dance for people who would never like the performance he puts on. So no, I don't think he needs to change. You guys know what you get with Gary. Gary ain't up here bumping his gums without results. Gary just got back from a trip in, uh, to Minnesota doing the work. So you guys know what you get. If you're, if you're asking him to change, it's only for cosmetics. You're not asking him to change. Are you going to ask him to change the work that he does? Are you going to ask him to change how he looks so that you'll be satisfied?
When you vote for me, you're not voting for symbolism. Whatever promise that I make, I'm going to accomplish the goal. And my thing is, is right now. African-American education is under attack. It is under attack in the Houston Independent School District. There is only six all-black high schools, historically black high schools left. In the state of Texas, and I'm blessed to say that I came from one of them, which is Jack Yates Senior High School. So failing is not an option. I'm a Yates lion. We don't know how to fail. We don't know. They didn't, they didn't teach us like that. They didn't breed us like that. So the only change that needs to be made. Is to the people that want to continue to stymie. African-American education for our children. The change that needs to be made is the racist decision-making that exists. In the Houston Independent School District. The change that needs to be made. Is the people who don't value the hardworking teachers that put their lives on the line right now, even during the COVID. That's the change that needs to be made. So Saul, my brother, I'm going to have the sweats on and the Jays on. But I'm going to get down like, like, like I'm running a Fortune 500 company. And I want people to clearly understand, do you have management experience, Mr. Monroe? I was an offshore catering manager. I handled million dollar, multimillion dollar contracts every single day. Every single day. I know exactly what I'm doing. And the thing is, is Dimitri and Donovan, oh, five star ain't going to change. Oh, five star ain't going to change. But sometimes to beat the system, you got to get inside of the system.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, you, you're not going to change anything too much from looking from the outside. You got to get in and then you got to change the system from within. Which works a lot more faster than if you were outside the system looking in. So that's why it took us four years to get rid of Donald Trump. We were working.
I'm just as sexy in my sweats as I am in my, my suits.
Exactly, exactly. But to sum it up though, you guys, like I said, I know you really want change. If you guys really want change. Shake up the system. We need progressive people in these, uh, things for our children. People that look like us, that can identify with us. Um, nothing against our parents. There comes a time where you're just too damn old and you're not going to change. We have people in my school board right here, 79, 80 years old, and they still talking about. Well, you know, there got to be two of us apart. They're, they're content just being there. As far as doing the work, Chromebooks, they couldn't even tell you how to do it. So we need innovative, progressive people, but we have to get behind these people. So I'm going to ask you guys that support the five star. Share the message, share, you know, get the word out there because you're going to be going with the city of Houston, right? This is the whole city of Houston. That's a big ass city. I mean, I, you know, that's all I can say. So let's get the word out.
On January 23rd. We'll have our very first kickoff campaign party fundraiser. If it's virtual, it's virtual. Say, if you can come, then come. You know, we already got the building secured. And we going to get out here and we going to do what we have to do. But like I told my people today, we had a meeting. That we don't need to raise a whole bunch of money because we don't need a whole bunch of money. Whatever we raise, we're going to spend on the campaign. And so be it. At the end of the day, if you want change, you have to make the decision yourself. Those that, you know, like, like my friend, uh, hold on, what's her name? Latonya Whittington. She's a precinct chair, but she's not in that district. And she say, what can I do to help? We got to spread the word. What we got to do is we got to honor the predecessors. We got to honor, honor the Maxine, Maxine Seals, you know, the, 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 the miss, uh. The, uh, the, the Rhonda Skilling Joneses. You know, we, we, we got to honor the people that, that, that were sitting in those seats before us in other school districts, the Allen Provosts. You see what I'm saying? But if these people can pass off the baton to the OG, because they know. It, it, he going, we going to be in good hands with him. Because one, he not going to play the game. He not going to take no money he ain't supposed to take. Those kids going to come first. What else you want? Give me the baton and let me run. And at the end of the day. I promise you after eight years, you're going to be able to see results. And your biggest problem is going to be, you don't want to run for reelection? No, I told you eight and I'm done. My man over here, he, he, he 21 years old. He ready. I made sure that he was ready. Now you pass the baton to him.
Uh, Janice Yates, how you doing? Looks like she has one of your campaign slogans to me. Where she says, change the district, not the man.
My last campaign slogan was, I'm not what you want. I'm exactly what you need. You need somebody that's no nonsense, that ain't going to play the game. You need somebody that's going to come in there, roll their sleeves up, and they going to go to work. You need somebody that is going to talk like a G, but they going to walk like one. So guess what? Carol Galloway, that, and I forgot Ms. Galloway because Ms. Galloway be calling me. And Ms. Galloway is a legend in education. She's a legend in education. Gary, you know, you can't cuss Ms. Galloway. I'm working on it. I'm a center in training. I'm working on it, Ms. Galloway. You know, it's, it's a lot of things, but. The thing is, is I know how to handle myself in the business atmosphere and the business climate. But it's just time that you cannot sleep on the best man for the job anymore. And for all those people who want to throw somebody in my race in November. For all those people who have political aspirations and think you're going to use the Houston Independent School District. As a stepping stone, and you have not been visible for the last four years. I promise you, I am going to drag you if you decide to get in this race. These kids deserve better and they're going to get better. They're going to get better because that's all I understand. When the kid's smiling, they doing better in the classroom. Even though we got to deal with state mandated tests, they passing the test. Five star having a good day. But when my kids uncomfortable, it's going to be some uncomfortable adults.
So in closing, Gary, um, uh, talk to the people. What, 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 what is going to get them to the polls? Let's say somebody does get in to oppose you to, to vote for you.
You know my name. But I'm different than people with name recognition. Not only do you know my name, you know my resume. I am the top education advocate, no matter what color in the state of Texas. You know who to call when it ain't going right for a kid. You know who to call when the union ain't doing you right and you paying them their dues and you a teacher. Let's stop playing. Nobody's more qualified than me. Nobody has done the work. And I'm so proud of one thing, that when I lost, I didn't stop working. I didn't become invisible. I actually went harder. So a vote for me is a vote for change. And is a vote for hope. Our children need some hope. And if we can give them some hope, we won't be burying them as fast as we're doing.
Donovan, what say you in closing?
Let's say I am closing you guys. Again, Donald Trump has basically conceded, even though he's still the ass that he's always going to be. Uh, don't forget tomorrow to check out Love in the Zone with, um, Paradise, the model. And if you guys haven't done it yet, download the hottest app on the internet. So you can listen to the hottest show, the Hot Seat Morning Show. And I believe it's, it's hot one, uh, hundred, Street 100?
Street 100, the heat.
The heat. Go check it out.
And I would just say in closing, before I can give it back to Gary to take us out of here, um. I, I, I know that you'll be successful and I know that, uh, the people of Houston and their children would be better off. Um, having you in that position. And I would just say to everybody that's watching. Go tell 10 people and tell them to tell 10 people that you got the five star running and he needs, um, every vote that he can get. Um, so that, uh, uh, the children can be better off for it because ultimately this is going to be about the children. And so, um, as Donovan said a minute ago, you have to do something different sometimes. You got to get away from the same old same old. Sometimes you got to shake things up. Um, to, to get a different result. I mean, what have you got to lose? You know, not that I'm trying to, you know, quote Trump or anything, but what do you have to lose? You know?
I, I just say that in closing. Our babies can be anything that they want to be. Our kids can be anything that they want to be. But a lot of them feel hopeless. When they go to a school campus, that should be the place that gives them the most hope. Because they spend the bulk of their day, 75% of their day is spent at that school. And the other 25% is spent at home. So that school should be a place where they can have fun. They can be educated. They can be mentored. They can deal with everything. But in my district that I run, there will not be hungry kids in the morning. That will not happen. They will have something to eat no matter what. If a kid can't afford a uniform, then let's figure out a way to get him one. But what we're going to start doing is we're going to believe in these kids so they can start believing in their self. And that's what it is. And I'm like Stone Cold Steve Austin. That's the bottom line. Cause trustee Monroe said so. Say another spirited discussion with the best in the business. Hey, they ain't cutting no corners tonight, man. And I ain't sweating no bullies either. Say, man, on behalf of my good friend Donovan Siddique. The queen, Dimitri Kate, I am the five star general. And this was the war zone. Until tomorrow. We'll holler at you.